This year, they probably get more money.
Yeah.
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 It gets started at six to five.
Yeah.
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 Good evening, members of council and citizens of Williamsburg County. Can we get a sound check for our social media inlets? There again, okay, sound check at this time. Do we have anyone on the teleconference line? Remember, citizens can may dial in to the 877-309-2073. Phone number, the access code is 590-380-589. Again, there's nothing open for public hearing, so you will just be able to listen only. We are open to the public with the maximum of 25 people in chambers. So we are good on the teleconference line. Very good. Thank you. We're going to go ahead and call this regularly scheduled council meeting to order for August 2nd, 2021. We have the invocation will be by Councilman Woods.
Thank you. Let us pray. Our heavenly Father, we thank you for life, health, and strength. We thank you, heavenly Father, for an opportunity to come before this community to do the business of this county. But besides that, heavenly Father, we want to first of all, thank you for all the blessing you bestowed upon us. Heavenly Father, you didn't have to do it, but you did anyhow. And heavenly Father, as we begin this meeting today, we want to ask heavenly Father that the things we say and the things that we do be pleasing in your sight. And when we leave this place, please grant us safe return to our residences. These and many other blessings, we pray in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen. Amen. Amen.
Thank you, Councilman Woods. For approval of minutes, we had the public hearing and regularly scheduled council meeting that was scheduled July 2021. We need a motion for approval of the minutes.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand. Opposer's the same. Motion is carried. We have nothing for third reading, but for second reading, we have ordinance number 2021-13, an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax and incentive agreement by and between Williamsburg County, South Carolina, Santee Electric Cooperative acting for itself, one or more affiliates, and/or other project sponsors collectively the company pursuant to which the county shall covenant to accept certain negotiated fees in lieu of advilarian taxes with respect to the establishment and/or expansion of certain facilities in the county, the project, and two other matters related thereto. What is the pleasure of council?
Motion for second reading, Madam Chair.
Do we have a second?
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none.
All those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand.
Madam Supervisor, I'm going to have to abstain from this vote. The conference.
Yes, sir. It was duly noted last council meeting and now this meeting. Councilman Floyd is abstaining from this meeting due to the potential for, what do you got it? For the potential of conflict of interest. Thank you. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand. Opposer's the same.
The motion.
Ms. Carrie. Our next order of business is for first reading. It's going to be titled only of an ordinance to authorize the issuance and sale of not exceed 1.61 million 675,000 general obligation refunding bond, Series 2021, or such other appropriate series designation of Williamsburg County, South Carolina, fixing the form and details of the bond, delegating to the county supervisor and the chair of county council certain authorities related to the bond, providing for the payment of the bond, and the disposition of the proceeds thereof and other matters related thereto. This is title only. Just need a motion and a second for first reading.
Motion for first reading, please.
Second.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is all business, the discussion on the Williamsburg County Chavis Wellness Center project. The only thing that at this time that we are going to be addressing during this particular meeting is if we are going to have a project located near and around the Chavis One Stop in Hemingway. If so, then that needs to be in the form of a motion.
Madam Supervisor.
Yes, sir.
May I say a few words?
Yes, sir.
You know, I know the last two meetings, one we voted and one we didn't. We've been discussing this thing for a good while. And as a matter of fact, it was agreed to in 2016 while the money was being acquired with grants and loans. It was supposed to go forward, but for some reason, it was delayed. It was stalled. And I don't know why, and I don't think anybody knows why. But now the money is in place, and I think it's in place. And it's been discussed. And I think the longer we wait with this thing is the more that it's going to cost, whatever option we pick, one, two, three, four, five. And probably more importantly than that is, you know, the community, our community needs something positive down there. They need it to build on, and this is one step, I think, in the right direction for the people, for not only the children, but for the adults as well. Somewhere to go, somewhere to join, somewhere to have family reunion, somewhere to cook fish, somewhere, whatever they want to do. But they don't have that now in the area. They need it. They need it. So what I would like to do is I'd like to make a motion to approve the project. To approve the project. Number two, if possible, but to approve the project. And of the Chavis Wellness Center. Thank you, Madam Supervisor.
Thank you.
Second.
Hold on. We need a little bit of order. So basically, what is happening now, and let me give you all what this is about. Last, you're right, the last council meeting, we had to make a decision as to, it was first thought of, is to make a decision to whether the project was still a viable project and something that all council members wanted to embark on. I think that should be the order of operation simply because right now, everything will have to be resent out for bid and approval again. So I just think that it would be premature for council members to make a decision at this time when you will be allowed the next meeting to make a decision about choices. And I say that because we definitely want to get to a point to where we're like, do you really, does everyone agree on this particular project? And then from that point, once we determine that, then you need to tell me what you want for that project. And then if you decide you want to make some changes, you want to do this, then at that point, I have to send that back to the architecture. Once the architecture gets it, then it has to be reformulated, then sent back to USDA for final approval. Once it's sent to USDA and they give us the approval, we can at that point go out and bid it again because the cost is going, it has changed because this project has been in the till now for years. So we just got to the point, you know, last week that we were able to, you know, make a determination, last council meeting, we were able to make a determination. But all of these things now have to follow a certain order because if not, then we're going to end up voting on something that the price has changed and the price is now overran. So we don't want to do that. And I just think, in my opinion, I think we need to take the baby steps. I mean, we can continue on the process, but I think as a council, we all really need to discuss this as a council. That's just my opinion as the chair.
Madam Supervisor, just to clarify something. That this now, should this now come before full council, as you were saying now, whether we're going to go with it? And then does it go through the process then of a bid coming before the bid committee? Is that the procedure we are to follow?
So the recommended procedure to follow to make sure that we do not run over in costs is to, one, determine if there needs to be a project, and number two, determine what you all want that project to be. And then from that point, once you tell me what you want the project to be, then at that point, we will send it over to the architect. If there is a change, it may be something different, I don't know. But we will have to send this out for rebid.
And, I'm sorry, and does the matching funds change as to the different project, one, two, three, four, five, does the matching fund that we have, does that change also?
It could, depending upon how much we're going to have to use.
Thank you.
It could change. It could be less, or it could be more. But I just think, again, that I believe that it is, you all need to discuss this as a team as to how you want us to proceed. And whatever you all suggest, if you want to go ahead and try this again, then I will execute upon your demand at that point. But I just feel that it would be premature for us to try to do this. That's just my opinion.
I agree with also.
Madam Supervisor, so what you're asking us to do now is to make a determination as to whether or not we want some type of project, right?
Right.
Then after that, then we can decide what and how much it's going to cost, et cetera.
You can determine exactly what you want the project to look like.
Okay.
And if it's settled upon the fact that, hey, we want to go with the architecture has provided us in previous bids, then that will be fine. But again, the options were based on what the architecture, I'm sorry, the bidders, which includes the architectures, had decided that those options were not presented by me. They were presented from the architecture. So I just think that we need to take baby steps so that we don't miss something or we don't run into an issue, a financial issue, right now because all these things.
Madam Supervisor, we're seeing the project, but are we seeing the Chavis Wellness Project that we want to do?
So that will be completely up to you all, how you want to form that motion. My responsibility to this council is just to simply state, look, guys, you want a project or not? And if everybody agrees you want a project, then we move on to the next step, okay? You want a project. Now what do you want your project to look like? And then we would develop that from that point. And then once you tell me what you want it to look like, then at that point, we go back. If it's something that changed, then fine. If it's something that didn't change, we're still going to have to send this out for rebid, no matter what decisions you all make.
Madam Supervisor, the bids will take probably, what, first of the year or December or not long?
Depends on how long it's going to take you all to determine what do you want this, what kind of project you want and what do you want it to look like.
Well, I think that was the motion to come up with, to have a project.
Mm-hmm.
Not stipulate what option.
Exactly.
So that was my motion.
Mm-hmm.
To go ahead and have the project, but not specifically stated what option.
Right. What state?
So the motion, again, the motion, suggested motion was that are you all going to go forward with a project that is near or around the Chavis One Stop location in Hemingway, South Carolina? And then at that point, you all will carry on from there and determine if, yes, you all want the project. And then after that, then tell me what kind of project do you want?
Mr. Lee, could you restate your motion?
So, okay, I would like to make a motion to approve the project, the Chavis Wellness Center for the area of Chavis and Hemingway.
Second.
Need a second.
Second.
All right. So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, just to make sure that we see everyone and understand who's all voting, all those in favor of the motion by role, please state your answer. District one.
Yes.
District two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
District four.
Yes.
District five.
Absolutely.
District six.
Yes.
District seven.
Yes.
And obviously, no opposers. The motion is carried. We will have a project located at the Chavis One Stop in Hemingway, South Carolina. Order of business. So you all have homework you need to do. To the next meeting, you need to let me know what it is you want to do, and we will move from there.
Madam Supervisor, if I could just maybe make a suggestion?
Mm-hmm.
And just see what the pulse of the rest of the council, if maybe Mr. Lee, Mr. Wilson, and one more council member could form a committee, kind of get together and decide, you know, because it's going in that area, what those citizens down there, they know the needs of that area more so than, say, myself. And that committee could come back to us with the proposal that folks down there have agreed upon. I think that would be a good direction ahead if Mr. Lee and Mr. Wilson are willing to do so.
I agree.
That's just my suggestion.
And I definitely think we should include some of the committee, community members in on that with us to be able to come up with something within the parameters of the finance that we have.
All right.
That's just a suggestion. That's not a motion.
All right. However you all decide on that, whatever you decide, I will execute upon your request. Supervisors report. We all have to start looking at a contingency plan for our increase in COVID-related illnesses. So that is something that I will be monitoring over the next few weeks, and I will come back before this body to figure out a plan as to how we are going to execute going forward. It is important that our citizens know that CDC has changed their requirements or has changed their rules, and basically, those of you who have been vaccinated will still need to wear a mask inside, especially if you have a compromised immune system. So we want to make sure that for the next meeting, we need to, if we need to increase our ability to protect our employees and our citizens, what it is we're going to do. So I will be sending out a emergency plan to address those issues.
Do you think, not in truth, but do you think you'll have to mask back up?
I would. That would be my recommendation. It would be my recommendation, considering over the last few days, we have gone up tremendously, not just in Williamsburg County, but also in the state. And we have experienced at this time, one loss of life due to COVID. So I think it would be important for us to start revisiting that for the next council meeting when I present you all the plan, okay? I'd like to take this opportunity as to say a big thank you to the Williamsburg County Sheriff's Office and Williamsburg County Recreation Building and Grounds and the Music Festivals Committee for an awesome event on Saturday, although you all did receive rain and had to shut down earlier than what you had predicted. It was still an awesome event, so kudos to that group for putting this on for our county. So if you hadn't had the opportunity, they have a lot of information, a lot of video on Facebook, go visit it. But just wanted to send that out to the group that put this together. Also, we need a motion now for executive session in accordance to section 30-4-70, one and two, discussion of a personnel and contractual matter concerning Williamsburg County Behavior/Health.
The move, Madam Supervisor.
Second. Need a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of moving to executive session, please signify by raising your hand. Opposer's the same. The motion is carried. We are going into executive session. Opposer is the same, the motion is carried, we are going into executive session. We need a motion to return to the regularly scheduled council meeting.
We need a motion to return to the regularly scheduled council meeting.
Any discussion?
Hearing none, all those in favor of returning a regular council meeting please signify by raising your hand. Oppose is the same. The motion is carried. During the executive session meeting there was no action taken on any of the items. We need a motion for adjournment.
Any discussion?
Hearing none, all those in favor of adjournment please signify by raising your hand. Oppose is the same. Thank you, wins for county citizens and members of council.